The Wunsacket School Committee Meeting on Wednesday, October 30th, 2019 is now called to order at 7 o'clock. Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Borje.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke is...
Gonna be late.
Gonna be late this evening. Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Nato.
Here.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Here.
Would you please stand with me for a moment, silence, and please.
I am a loyal citizen of the United States of America and to uphold what which stands by nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with citizens good and welfare. If there's anybody who would like to address the school committee, please come to the podium, state your name, and address to the record. Seeing none, let's go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recently, Alex Link, the Human Resources Business Partner of CBS Health, visited the PTEC interns at the Wunsacket Area Career and Technical Center. He wanted to provide some feedback in regards to the PTEC interns. He stated, "One leader shared very bright interns already ahead of schedule. They take direction very well." In addition, Alex insisted, I'm sorry, Alex visited the BIC building where some of our students were in the security guard and was talking about how great the kids are and that they are very polite. I want to thank you and congratulations to the wonderful PTEC students and teachers in the program. Sandra Nolan, the Director of Concurrent Enrollment and Related CTE Initiatives for the Community College of Rhode Island, wanted to share her experience when she visited the Wunsacket Area Career and Technical Center on October 4. She stated, "The students who greeted us were friendly, responsive, mature, and smiling. They looked like professionals going to work. Not only did they engage in my questions, they continued the conversations." She asked to pass her appreciation and comments to the students and teachers while stating, "I can see why you are so proud of your students and school. It makes me miss working with students." Congratulations again to those students and their teachers. The Wunsacket Education Department and the Rhode Island Certified Nurse/Teacher Association is pleased to announce that Renee De Senzo, Certified School Nurse/Teacher at Leo Savoy Elementary School, will be featured in their Fall 2019 Spotlight on Rhode Island School Nurses article. Renee was nominated by a fellow Rhode Island school nurse as a great example of the valuable work school nurses do. Congratulations to Renee on this great achievement. And finally, beginning on November 1st, that's this Friday, the Wunsacket Fire Department and Wunsacket Police Department will begin participating in a High Five Friday Program at all elementary schools within the district. The objective of the program is to have the city's public safety personnel invisible weekly at all the elementary schools and interact with all the children in the city. What they'll basically do is at dismissal time, a different personnel will be there, give high fives to the students, you know, wish them a great weekend, and just wish them some encouraging words as well. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Is there any member that would like to make, add some comments? If not, I'll make a motion, we see there's not a file of recognition and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll approve, I want to be approved of the minutes, make a motion to approve the October 9, 2019 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Dr. McGee will call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
I'm Mrs. Appleton.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any member that would like to take any of the items out of order and to discuss any of the items in the consent agenda? Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Yes.
There are no communications. You'll notice, for those of you who've been coming to our meetings, we've moved one item around. We're gonna have the superintendent's report at this point because we usually have it at the end of the meeting where everybody's ready to leave. So, I would rather hear all the pearls of wisdom from Dr. McGee early in the meeting so we can commit some on it and make real comments about them.
Are you kidding me? People weren't listening and they were reading the report when I was writing this in my report?
Absolutely, so.
That's shocking.
Dr. McGee, not me shocking.
Shocking. Thank you, thank you. I can always count on you, Sarah. Thank you.
I think, Sarah, you're looking for food.
Yeah, bless.
Dr. McGee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I am gonna start, I have two items on my report. First are the RIDE test scores. As you know, last week, the Department of Education released the 2019 RIDE test scores. These scores were from last spring, and this would mark the second year in a row now that the state has used the RIDE test as the statewide assessment for students in grades three through eight. Recently, about maybe a month or so ago, we received the SAT and the PSAT scores as well, which at a meeting in the near future, Dr. Holt and I will be doing a formal presentation with all of the disaggregated data. But for tonight, I just wanted to let the committee know that we did receive our results, and I'll give you the school department as a whole in terms of last year, two years ago's percentage proficient, and then this past spring as well. And I will give you a comparison of the state as well as the other three core, urban core communities. So, here in the school department, in the area of mathematics, again, this is grades three through eight, 11.8% proficient in mathematics versus two years ago, we made a slight increase of percentage, just percent, under 1%, but we were 11.4% two years ago. For ELA, English Language Arts, we were 14.1, and two years ago, we were at 12%. The state of Rhode Island, this past year, 29% of students across the state in grades three through eight were proficient in RIDE versus, that's in math, versus 38% in reading. The other three urban core communities, Central Falls, were at 7.9% for math, and 12.6% for ELA. Pawtucket, which of the four urban core, Pawtucket is the highest performing, which really sort of, I'd like to reach out to Pawtucket to see, you know, what they're doing, what types of things they have in place. Because again, as I said, they're one of the four urban core. They're 24% proficient in ELA and 17% proficient in math. Providence is 11% proficient in math and 17% proficient in ELA. So, our schools specifically, we saw, actually, Paris Elementary School, which is, was the only school currently, which is a comprehensive school, saw actually the most growth in both math and in ELA. They saw about an 8% growth in math. They went from 7% to 15% proficient. And for ELA, they saw about a 6% growth from 10% to 16%. We had some other schools that showed some growth as well. The middle schools, Hamlet Middle School, saw 5% growth in ELA, and they saw 3% growth in math. Some of our other schools which saw some slight growth as well. Coleman saw three points, three percentage points growth in ELA, up to 10%, and they went a little over 1% in math. So, what you tend to see, and the commissioner, when the commissioner sent the initial report out, she stated, and she's correct, that when you change to a different assessment, the second year, there typically is an increase because students, even though they've only taken it once before, it's the second time and that they would have taken, that they're a little bit more used to the test. So, you typically will see a little bit of an increase statewide. The percentage increase was anywhere from 3% to 5% typically within districts. So, that's an overview of the data. As I said, Dr. Holt and I will be getting into the disaggregated data where we'll be looking at our ELL students, our English learners, our students with IEPs. So, we're gonna be breaking those numbers down a little bit more specifically. I think what we'll do is, it won't be during the report, it'll be actual agenda items at one of our school committee meetings very soon. I would say probably the end of, either the end of November or the December meeting, we'll do that. One of the things that we're going to be putting into place here, which we've been doing this, our principals have been working with an organization called CLE, which is a leadership for educational equity here in the district. They have action plans that are really addressing the data that's coming out of their specific schools and the data that they've been analyzing. They've been analyzing the RIDE tests. This will now be two years of RIDE tests that they're analyzing. They're also analyzing their STAR data that they have each year. So, they're gonna continue working on that, and I would imagine that the commissioner is going to be looking for, although she hasn't stated publicly yet, she'll be looking for specific plans for schools in order to improve and increase those scores. I know that we've already received a memo from the commissioner that she's gonna be looking for plans with respect to the PSAT and the SAT and how those PSATs and SAT scores will hopefully improve from year to year. And as I said, I imagine she'll be looking for the same thing for the RIDE tests. So, she's actually coming to the district on November 21st. I invited her, and she will be meeting with the district leadership team, and we will be, no doubt, discussing data with her. She is very, very, very high on data. She stresses the importance and as well as she should, in districts and schools should stress the data and what does the data show, and what areas do schools and districts need to improve on. So, we'll be working on that. We really have already started, you know, Dr. Holt and Mrs. Teresa and I have already sat down, as well as some other staff members in the district, to look at our data and start to prepare our presentation when the commissioner does come here on November 21st. And she's actually gonna go around to a school or two as well. So, that's where we stand with our RIDE test scores. You know, obviously, I'm disappointed. We certainly want to, you know, be doing better than being in the low to mid-teens. We have a lot of work ahead of ourselves. The good news is that we've started working already. We have plans that we've started. There are certainly gonna be some plans that are gonna be modified with respect to the curriculum. I feel as though we're in a good place with the curriculum. We have established a curriculum, a consistent curriculum across the district. And, you know, as the commissioner has said, at the state level, I've said this here on the district level, we'll best stay of course, and we're gonna continue working hard with what we have. Not add initiative upon initiative, but work on what we currently have with respect to the curriculum and instruction and improve on it. That's what it's gonna come down to, is improving on what we're doing. So, I don't think the committee has any questions?
The only question I have, or one of the questions I have, if some of the other urban areas are doing better than us, I guess I'd like to know whether or not they're teaching the exam. Because if it's a matter of having a consistent curriculum is one thing, but I know that, for example, the SAT exams, I know there are schools that actually either have review courses or will actually teach, and when they look at vocabulary, they focus on the SAT questions or the meanings, et cetera. If we have schools that are teaching which fits within a curriculum, but it sort of models itself to these tests, then I wanna know why we're not doing that if it fits in. Because, like you said, data's important. The negative attention that this district will get from the commissioner and RIDE, et cetera, can be based on results of these exams. If other schools are teaching the exam, then I'd like to know. Because then, it sets a whole new priority in terms of how you set the curriculum. And I'm not saying we go right ahead and do that, but I'd like to know, like you said, what's their secret? If they're similar to us, with the same kinds of issues that we have, why are we so weak?
Right.
Right? They got attendance and all the other things. So, for me, that would be important, and as well as, you know, other factors that you can find out. But that's one of them.
Sure.
Anybody else before Dr. McGee?
Yeah, me.
Mrs. Capwell.
Very good question. So, in your initial conversation with the commissioner, did she give you any insight as to what her expectations are for the types of plans that various districts are going to be presenting back to her, some guidance? Or is she leaving it up to the individual districts to formulate their own plan of action?
So, there hasn't been anything concrete. I know that she sent out in her memo when the PSAT and the SAT scores were released that districts would be required to put together a plan, but she didn't state any specifics. So, I'm gonna reach out to other districts and certainly reach out to her when she comes to visit us and ask her some of those questions. Is there a specific action plan form that she would like districts to use? Or is it just based on, you know, the district and what the district creates? There hasn't been any conversation about the RIDE test scores, but I'm sure that that will be coming out soon.
Dr. McGee?
Just to follow up on your thoughts about other districts and, you know, what types of programs they might be utilizing. I know I've had some conversations with Mr. Boulay about the OSAT prep and things like that, so we talked about it, and that's something that we're gonna be looking to potentially do as we move forward at high school. Next, the talk about the Nuestro Mundo charter school. So, many, actually, many folks who are here in the audience this evening and many, most school committee members were, have been present at the two RIDE hearings for the proposed Nuestro Mundo charter school here in Wunsacket. And, you know, I, I'm not gonna say anything here tonight that I don't think anybody here, anyone here disagrees with. I think that if this charter school is approved, this is gonna put this district in a major hole. And let's just talk about the biggest piece and the most important piece is the fiscal piece. In another year, we're gonna have to make some real decisions in the school department about staffing. We are going to be losing upwards to $1.5 million. That is almost unsustainable. We've been in a position over the last few years where we've been very, very fiscally conservative, but yet we've had the opportunity where we could to add some positions, which have been very helpful to the district. But now, we're gonna be right back into a place where we were when the budget commission was here, six years ago, seven years ago. And we're gonna have to make some hard decisions between, do we have to cut social workers? Do we have to cut reading specialists? We need them. We're not a district that has fluff. We're not a district that just creates positions because it sounds good. We have very specific needs in this community and in this district. As I go around to the schools and as the, my directors go around to the schools, and we go into classrooms, and we see the supports that many of our students do not have access to. Because we can't fund extra social workers, and we can't fund extra reading teachers. And that's not even to mention the class size we have here in Wunsacket. We have, if not the largest class size across the state. We're right at the top. So, you look in these, right, these assessment scores here, and you say, okay, we're in the teens, okay? We need support. So, what's gonna happen? $1.5 million is gonna be then taken away from this district that doesn't have enough support, to be left with less support. And we're gonna have to make some tough decisions when this does happen, as to what we cut, when really, we can't afford to cut anything, when really, what we need to do is add to this district. And I think it's a shame, I'm fed up. I can't believe that the Department of Education is gonna put us in this position, because make no mistake about it, RIDE is putting us in this position. I'm not against school choice. I'm really not. But what I am against is sifting money away from school districts that need it the most. And when is this, when is this gonna stop? Are we gonna have a charter school like we have at Dunkin' Donuts at every other corner of this city? Is that where we're coming to? What about the students that aren't accepted into the new charter school? I guess RIDE doesn't really care about those students, because if they did, we'd have increased funding. If they did, they wouldn't be saying, "Well, the kids that are in the charter school, they're gonna be fine. Those that are left back in the district, good luck." I think it's a shame. I don't know that there's anything we can do about it. It's wrong, and it's pretty depressing that a school district that has the needs that the Wunsacket Education Department has is pretty much going to just be ignored once again. We had a fair funding formula. That was great. It got us to a position where our heads were no longer below the surface of the water. But just because, you know, our nose was really handling great at the waterline, which it helped. Be sure, it helped. But now, our head's being pushed back under the water. And it's a shame, and I'm tired of it, and I really hope that the General Assembly and those that are in charge in this state start to think long and hard about the repercussions of some of these decisions with these districts. Because I said this at the first hearing, the public schools are the backbone of our democracy. And people need to wake up and see that, and fund school districts appropriately, and not allow these types of things to happen over and over and over again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to welcome Mr. Burke, who has joined us. He is now present, and I'd like to make some comments on the superintendent's report. Everything you've said has been echoed by a lot of the folks over at the meeting, whether the school committee or folks who are here in our audience, who spoke very well, and addressed all the major issues and challenges that this new charter school would present this community. One of the most important, if not the most, is definitely the finances. But what I really wanted to address is, that meeting, that hearing was a travesty. Every speaker only had two minutes to make comments, and I felt like there was so much more to be said. Fortunately, other folks, you know, raised the same issues that I would like to speak about, but it wasn't. And they seem, RIDE, the folks from RIDE were too comfortable. I don't know if this is a dumb deal, but I hope like you, Dr. McGee, that the General Assembly looks at this and stops placing charter schools in our city. Looks at the fair funding formula and addresses our ELL challenges, our special ed challenges, our transportation challenges, and all the other categories that we have not been fully funded. Because if they fund the shortage, each student that we have is like $2,800 short, that's another $14 million to this district. The last thing I want to talk about is when the partner, the lead partner of Nuestro Mundo spoke. And this irritated me the most because I never had a chance to really rebut his comments. He mentioned that the strength of the charter school of Nuestro Mundo would be compared to RIDE's level academy, which was the top school with the highest level of ELA proficiency in the state, where they had a 76% proficiency, while we were looking at a proficiency under 15%. And it was said in a very smug and condescending manner. So, I was not very happy about those comments, because I was asked on radios recently, "What do you think of the charter schools, RIDE?" I said, "I love it." And I said this on two stations, and both all said, "You do?" I go, "Yes, because that's my model. That's my stick in the ground." They are one school, not 12 or 13. They have very low class sizes. They do not have the ELL challenges that we have. They certainly do not address the special education needs of their students. None at all. They don't have any of the problems that face this district each and every day. So, they better do well on these tests. They better score high. Now, with a 76% proficiency, that's pretty high. Well, we're at 14. Well, if we transferred some of our different kinds of categories or challenges and problems that we have, attendance is one, they don't have that problem. Parents must be involved in charter schools and their students' education. We certainly haven't been able to force that, but if they had our issues, I'm sure their scores would be comparable to ours. So, I refute the Nuestro Mundo executive committee's comments that we should adopt this charter school with open arms, because see how well we're going to do. See how well we're gonna do and better than you, you, the public school. This is a school that doesn't even have a building. They have never gotten permission from the city council, and yet, they're telling us how great they're going to be. Well, I say we continue to fight. If there are other meetings that we need to have with RIDE that should happen, we should welcome them, we should look for them back with me. Because we have really got to keep plugging at this to stop this encroachment of charter schools in our community that can't afford them. Are there any other?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Nato.
A person from the audience asked the representative for RIDE the question that I want to be answered, and of course, he answers no questions. And the question was basically, "How do you, how did you select Wunsacket? Or why did you select Wunsacket?" That's the question. They know as well as we do where we stand in a fair funding formula, that we're at the bottom. They know our problems. It almost looks like a deliberate attempt to make things more difficult for public education. Another thing that bothered me is when Mr. Lupa got up to talk, who should be an advocate? He kind of sat on the fence. No, he didn't. He sat on the fence, and he didn't support strongly opposition, and he knows opposition. I mean, that's his job. I was very disappointed in him. He kind of took the, you know, the middle ground when he should have taken a strong position. I just have a feeling like that the council's stacked against us for some reason, and the people in charge know the impact of charter schools on our community. They're not ignorant of that back, but yet, they continue to move forward with this. I just don't know, but I'm really don't pedal up anything RIDE never have. I'm not a strong supporter of RIDE. I've seen it over the years, few things, and implement mandates to communities that were ridiculous. So, I just have a bad feeling about all this. I just hope our council stands strong, because Nuestro Mundo doesn't have a facility. I just hope our council stands strong because Nuestro Mundo doesn't have a facility and realizes the position we're in and doesn't allow that to continue.
Anyone else?
Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke, you're welcome.
Welcome, everybody. I'm sorry I was late. I went to parent teacher conferences until six o'clock, that's why I think. I'm just a little tired of it. I feel like I'm becoming a broken record because it still looks to me that this is a private school that they're proposing. I've tried private schools, I've tried public schools. I know the difference. When you can select a small group of students to be in your school, that's a private school. And I can't, it's a strength that RIDE buys this. They buy the idea that, okay, we're gonna select certain students, and then we'll call it a public charter school. It just broke my mind that people buy this, that thick rule state. So I mean, I'm obviously, I echo a lot of remarks that were made, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go on to the subcommittee reports. We'll start with health and wellness.
Oh, wow, that's big.
My shit.
I'm glad. All right. I think our committee members, you have on your agenda the health wellness self-assessment that was done just completely recently. And if you would go to the second page, the first page says district summary, wellness policy implementation checklist. If you go to the second page of that, you'll see it'll say district summary. So I'm just gonna stay there with the district summary. But before I begin, I do want to, I have to thank a lot of people here. First of all, I want to thank Colin Rendell from the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, who really leads us and presents a lot of these materials for us. I also want to thank all the principals, all the principals of the schools who completed this assessment before the end of the summer. Also, I want to thank Dr. McGee and Mrs. Blais, who sort of bring it around together. Is there anyone else I'm missing right now? Dr. McGee, thank you. And oh, yes, he is, oh, he is, all right. Ellen Chow, who's from Sebeto. She was like one of the, the great girl who was on this material assessment. And this would not have been done without all of those people I mentioned, okay? So looking at the summary here to the real of it, this summary of each of the school's self-assessment, it ranges from 49 provisions, broken down to seven sections. Those sections are communication, food and beverages in the cafeteria, food and beverages outside the cafeteria, fundraising, nutrition education, wellness promotion, physical education, and physical activity. Based on the rubric of minimum standards, exceeding standards, group improvement, plus six provisions related to district-level wellness responsibilities and presentation of successes and areas of improvement. The wellness policy implementation checklist was developed by the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition as a monitoring tool to review individual school activity related to applicable Rhode Island and federal regulations, as well as best practice provisions aligned with the district or group wellness policy. Federal and state regulations require school districts to adopt a wellness policy, to maintain a wellness committee, and to support the implementation of the policy in each district school. In addition, districts must conduct an assessment of wellness policy every three years at a minimum and share the results with the public. This is our first assessment tool. We've never done it before, so this is our first one. And it'll serve as a benchmark, hopefully it'll be the benchmark that we've been doing in three years. So looking at the district summaries. Exceed standards, exceeding standards, needs improvement, and not applicable. Okay, so just dealing with wellness committee, we have, the district maintains an active wellness committee that meets at least four times daily, and obviously we exceed standards there. In fact, we meet monthly, we will meet monthly. Secondly, the district wellness committee is co-chaired by a school committee member and a school administrator, and has community-wide representation. Administrators be teachers, nurses, school staff who service, parents, students, community members, with the majority not employed by the school district in accordance with general odds. Now, here we need improvement, okay? Obviously, we're commuted by Mrs. NATO and myself, all right? And we have members of the school district that are part of our committee every month. But we need our parents, and we need students. And in this area, we are needing improvement. Next, our leadership and communication. Once our board of school officials is responsible for district-wide compliance with the wellness policy, we need standards here. District has an annual communication and recruitment effort for wellness committee participation. Obviously, we need improvement there based on the fact that we haven't placed enough of community on the committee. Finally, district holds wellness meeting agendas and limits our district website will be a blessing. We meet standards there, we do that all the time, okay? And finally, we need overall assessment. District conducts regular, at least once every three weeks, assessments of wellness policy implementation in each school and makes this information available to the public, school committee report, website posted, public forum, et cetera, and we meet standards there. So looking at that first assessment, we did not, we didn't do too bad, okay? We're pretty much on track, and we know what we need to do, we know what works well, and that's where we are. Also, with the packet, you notice there are 19 third pages that detail schools and detail some of these specific set areas. So I, I think that, if anybody has any questions, or also if Mrs. NATO can add anything, that would be great.
All right, I have it on my, thanks, Ms. Blais. I have it on my phone, and it's much easier to read than the PowerPoint. Number one, don't go by me, but I'm never a fan of PowerPoint presentations. And we're doing pretty well, and there are several areas that need improvement, but I commend all the principals at each school for really taking charge and doing this kind of survey and keeping track of these things. I think in Windsocket, we're doing a decent job with it, and we want to do the best job that we can, and that's our goal, and we will get to that goal. We have some very devoted people on that wellness committee that come to every meeting, listen to everything. Some of it's hard to understand because it's in the jargon of the state coalition and, you know, into where we get food and how it's grown and all of that kind of thing, but most interesting. But I think our wellness policy was updated a bit, and I think the policy has to be revised or updated every three years. And I think next year is the year when we have to actually present it. So that's pretty much what has happened.
Anyone else have comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the health and wellness update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the policy subcommittee update. Mrs. Kaviskas?
There is no policy subcommittee updating history's policy subcommittee, and it was canceled. It has not ever been scheduled.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll go to Pathways Project in Vernon School. Mrs. Gabwal?
Thank you, Chairman. So today's update will be the longest of the series, as I'd like to fully set the stage for my agenda item, that being a significant undertaking at Vernon Heights, and then frame up the whos, the whys, and whens, and then going forward, provide an ongoing higher level report. So the Windsocket School District has the fortune of being chosen for a two-year fellowship with the Highlander Institute. For those unfamiliar with the Highlander Institute, their mission is to improve education by focusing on the educator. Highlander's specialty is working with chosen districts on blended and personalized learning models with a focus on creating equity through education. Highlander's, the Highlander Institute does not make assumptions that there is a one-size-fits-all solution across districts and instead encourages a whole-grown, student-centric approach. As part of this grant-funded fellowship, the Highlander Institute has assigned Windsocket with a fellow, and fellows are educators and/or administrators working solely for the Highlander Institute, with the responsibility for collaborating with our district to assess our district's unique needs, coach us in creating the future vision for blended and personalized learning with the integration of technology. Will build out the vision, deploy it, or perhaps better yet described as pilot at Vernon Elementary, assess the results, tweak or refine as needed, and then they will coach us towards successful growth to other schools and eventually a district-wide deployment of best practices and programs. Windsocket is in good company. Nine other elementary schools in Rhode Island are currently enrolled in the Pathways program. They are located in East Providence, Central Falls, North Providence, and Cranston. So Principal DeRogers and Heather Neal have motivated a large, highly energized group to work with the Highlander Institute. Our very own Almatoriani, Dawn Morell, Dr. McGee, Dr. Full are amongst those chosen for this adventure. In a very short time, we have come together and covered quite a bit of ground. Just this year alone, the design team will meet six times. Our first meeting was just earlier this month. To date, we have had our orientation meeting, where we got to know each other and agree on our shared mission and how we will work together on our mutual goals of enhancing education for our students. Next, we moved into my favorite part thus far, which is, or was, I should say, a student shadow for half a day. I valued that it didn't matter if we were a non educator like myself or a 30-year teacher in the district. All design team members shadowed a student with the goal of truly living the life of a student specifically focused on what their day felt like and turning those experiences into valuable, shareable output back with the team as we did in our meeting yesterday. Additionally, we dug deeper into data as well as had the opportunity to review real-life input collected from teachers, students, and family at Vernon. And then essentially, all of this sets the stage for us to begin visioning and getting very specific about classroom change, followed by making a plan for implementation, and finally to create our understanding of success and how we will measure and improve. I do want to say I'm very grateful for this opportunity to participate, and I look forward to providing more ongoing reporting as we progress. Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, Mrs. Kepel, did you get an A for the day?
Did I get an A?
Yeah.
Always.
Always. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Pathways Project at Vernon School report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll have the technology subcommittee update. Mrs. Gabwal?
Excellent.
You're busy tonight.
I am.
Look at that. Excellent.
Yes. So the technology subcommittee will meet on November 12th at 6:00 at McPhee Building.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file that report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into conferences and discussions. I guess we'll be looking at some numbers. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Perrier for the fiscal update for the end of this past fiscal year and June 30th, 2019. Take it away, Mr. Perrier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you is the final June 30th, 2019 fiscal update for the General Fund from the Science Education Department. These are gonna be the numbers that we send to the auditors. We've closed out everything, all journal entries have been finalized, and we're ready to turn this over to the auditors next week and begin the audit. Currently, June 30th, 2019, we're looking at a little over $100,000 surplus to close the year. Some revenue highlights, tuition charges for ad district students attending WAC-TAC have been built up for the entire year, and at this time, we're $150,000, $157,000 ahead of budget due to the fiscal enrollment. Rental income is $115,000 ahead of budget, and Medicaid revenue is also finalized at $646,000 ahead of budget. And that's due to reimbursement throughout the, through the program for special education expenditures. It was much better than it dissipated. These numbers were pretty consistent throughout the year, not a lot of change at the close year on the revenue side. As for expenditures, all regular salaries are finalized, and we're $673,000 under budget after netting it with our assumed $250,000 employee turnover allowance. The district's under budget by about $423,000. As an FYI to the school committee, all of the FY19 salary requirements have been booked in fiscal year 19. There's been no runover from year to year. We're able to catch everything up on our catch-up there for the retro pays. That's all booked to fiscal year 19. And any salary requirements from fiscal year 20 have been booked in fiscal year 20. We'll talk about that in the next update as well. Medical expenses finished $331,000 over budget. We actually finished very strongly with medical. The deficit was much larger than that four or five months ago. The last four months of the year were very good, were very consistent, and bill amounts were what I like to see on a weekly basis. And also, we had a rather large credit from Blue Cross School Shield itself for IDNR expenses. Those are incurred, but not yet received expenses that are charged to wed. Much like we closed our books June 30th, Blue Cross School Shield does the same thing, and they gave us an estimate of the bills that they still need the charges for, but we need to book expenses for as of June 30. So our number went down over last year, so we're able to pick up about $170,000 to $180,000 on that credit, which again helped cut to the deficit for the year in close. I know we've been battling out of district tuitions and transportation costs all year long. The two put together really closing down a million dollars over budget. That's kind of how that landed. And I know we've kind of talked about how these costs have been out of line all year. Special education department did a great job of controlling them as the year went on. But between that and other transportation with state line, we really had a rough year in that area. But it's, the bills are what the bills are, and these are the services that students need, and the transportation we need to provide, and where they need to go. So there's really, at the end of the day, we're just gonna have to pay those bills and continue to work going forward. And finally, we had HVAC, while it was projected to be a little bit higher over budget, and that ended up actually only coming in $190,000 over budget. To talk again about a couple of things on your agenda later on, you have two transfers for new business that I took the liberty of incorporating into this, so that you have a true idea of where we're gonna end up at the close of fiscal year 19. So those two transfers that you could potentially approve, they are in as part of this fiscal update, so there won't be any changes as far as this goes going forward. So if anybody has any questions on the June 30th financials, I'd love to answer them.
Just a couple of issues. The transfers you're talking about are taking excess monies to put into our capital budget and the medical budget.
Yeah, I was gonna go a little deeper into them.
Right, will let you do that. But basically, $190,000, that transfer allows us to apply that, to those funds to year 20, which you're gonna talk about, what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna leave it there. It's a good thing that we do have the ability to make those transfers from the operating budget to the capital budget, because that will really come into play this next fiscal year. The second item is, maybe you can just let us know, how much did we pay out to the charter schools this year, all the charter schools that are in existence here in Windsocket?
For fiscal year 19, we're just short of $800,000 for payments to charter schools.
And roughly, how much revenue is taken away from us by the state? How much do we lose?
It's about $10,000 student, times the number of students. It's a significant, significant number.
There's like 400 some odd students that are in the charter schools right now, so we're talking 4 million?
Yeah, you're in the ballpark on that, Mr. Chairman.
So if those funds were, were not taken away, even if we took 400 students in, it certainly wouldn't add that much of a cost to, to the, to the school system, but yet we would be able to use those funds elsewhere for the new personnel programs we still have to have.
That's correct. There's no changes to the fixed costs beyond the adding employees, teachers, PAs, and so forth and back.
Okay. Any other thoughts on June 30th? If not, I'll make a motion, receive and place on file a fiscal update for fiscal 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we turn to fiscal 2020, and the numbers, the actual numbers to September 30th, 2019. Mr. Perrier?
Okay, so we're on to September, September 30th, 2019. This is our first fiscal year 20 update of the year. This is a little different. If you take a look at the fiscal update that I provided, there's actually an approved budget column, and then there's a proposed budget column. As everyone may remember, last year when we built the budget, the contracts were not finalized at the time, and we ended up building a budget based on no raises instead of trying to guess at what the raises may be. The fiscal year 20 approved budget is what the budget that was approved by the school committee, while the FY20 proposed budget is the numbers that I put together to show we added in the additional state revenue that we received in June, and then we took that additional revenue and then spread it across the salaries and the benefits to cover the raises that we ended up giving. I plan on having a finance subcommittee meeting so that we can delve deeper into that, but I wanted to kind of put something together for you so you have a better idea of at least what we're looking at in the ballpark here for the first fiscal update of the year. We can certainly discuss in finer detail during that finance subcommittee meeting about what I decided to do with the budget, and then if we want to make some changes, we can certainly make changes then. And I'd like to bring you a finalized fiscal year 20 budget probably, hopefully next month, the next month, certainly by the early, early December at the latest. We can have a finalized fiscal year 20 budget and move forward with that. So that's kind of my plan on that. I did, again, make some, make some judgment calls here, and again, the biggest thing with the budget was that we didn't have raises built in, but now we've taken that money, the additional funds from the state and some other additional revenue sources, spread that out amongst our shortfalls on the salary, and then we have our proposed budget here. So to talk about the September 30th budget in general, right now, all revenues that are on schedule will be budgeted, so we really don't have any, any issues there on the revenue side of things. As far as expenditures go, we're currently projecting the $640,000 under budget this time on regular salaries, but if you net that in with the $836K in employee turnover allowance, we're actually showing a deficit of a little over $200,000. As the year goes on, due to vacancies and employee turnover, I imagine that deficit will continue to decrease as the year goes on, and I'm hopeful that we'll get back to basically a $0 budget as the year progresses here. Medical expenses, they're currently $1.23 million under budget. The way we closed fiscal year 19 has carried over to the beginning of fiscal year 20, so we're, we're really doing well, but I think the thing to remember is we're doing well now, and it could all change in a week. So while we started off the year well, it only really takes one back order to kind of flip us back around, so we'll continue to monitor the medical going forward. But I've been very happy with how the Blue Cross School Shield bills have come in so far on a weekly basis so far for this fiscal year. We're actually running under budget for HVAC this year. I know we set it aside quite a bit as we kind of had a rough year with it last year, but you know, with the winter coming up, I imagine we may see some changes to that as well. So we're going to keep an eye on that going forward, and hopefully my friend here won't spend too much money, won't, won't spend too much money on us, so we'll see what breaks. As for transportation, we're currently projecting $106,000 over budget. It's, it's really due to one thing. When we built the budget for fiscal year 20, we anticipated an increase from both Durham and from statewide, but as everyone knows here, the Durham bid that we went with is actually the same amount of money and the same across the board for fiscal year 19 versus year 20. The big change this year has been statewide transportation, and it has been through the roof. I've never seen it at the level it is, but thankfully, we did have money budgeted. It was just for, for our local contractor and not statewide, but because of the situation with our local contractor, we're able to take that money and actually apply it to the statewide bill right now. We're looking at about $100,000 shortfall as of right now, and that's due to the increased budget number and taking the Durham money and applying it. So luckily, we kind of have a balance for that, but it's quite surprising how much that bill has gone up year over year. Currently, our addition tuitions are projected to be over budget by $137,000, which compared to half a million we were over last year. We're actually doing fairly well. And finally, electricity is actually kind of caught my eye early this year. We had a rate increase at the end, close of the fiscal year last year, and that's kind of translated to maybe a slightly larger building we're used to seeing from electricity. Now, it's again very early to kind of project this out. It's really going to come down to what kind of winter we're going to have. At the end of the day, that's really what drives this. If it ends up being a mild winter, I kind of see this number coming down, and again, we'll keep an eye on it, and we'll see how it goes over the next few months. I think overall, we did make a one, right now, we have a $1 million transfer of fund balance to balance the budget, to come up with basically a balanced budget at the end of, end of the day. It's a little over $7,000 surplus. During our contract negotiation sessions, we anticipated this, and it was my thought that we need a million dollars extra to cover fiscal year 20, and here we are, we're looking to grab a million dollars from our fund balance and apply it here. So while a million might seem like a lot, this is, this is the plan that we put together, and we put the money aside. We've been conservative over the last fiscal years, the last, the last several fiscal years, to prepare for these contracts, and now we're executing on that. And so I think overall, it's still, it's still early, but we're about where I anticipated it would be, and I think the next few months will be good to kind of monitor. We'll look at our POs, see how they're tracking, and monitor expenses in general, and continue to make decisions going forward based on that. If anybody has any questions on September, I'd like to answer those.
Just some observations. So in 2019, the year we finished, we took a million dollars that we would have available and we put into our reserves for the use in 2020, and our 2020 proposed budget or our budget, a million dollars is coming in to balance off, but as you would expect, we were hoping for that. The one, the one item that we have in here, you and I have discussed this today, is that when you look at the medical budget that we had proposed, $9 million, we're looking at history right now, an actual, an actual medical cost that would lead us to believe that 7.8 million should be a total medical cost for this fiscal year. However, what you said, things go south, and we go, and we hid our budgeted numbers of 9 million. That million two that was showing as the savings could drop as a, could drop to the bottom line and put us in a, in a deficit situation of a million two. So that's something, it's always the same line item that we have to monitor very closely, something that is not in our control, but when you look at the numbers and say, well, gee, everything's fine. We made a million, we're going to use a million, everything balances off for these three years. Not the case, because we have, we have reflected in our budget what is actually happening this year in medical, and it's the savings of a million two, so if that stays, then we'll be fine. We'll break the needle. If it doesn't, then we'll be adding to that deficit as we go along. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman. And as I say here, I know it seems like every time I give a fiscal update, I'm talking about medical, medical, medical. I mean, it's, it's, it's a wild card, and it's a big wild card, that.
It's people.
It's 10% of our budget.
It's one item, though.
So, you know, everyone's second-guaranteed, but it is what it is.
We'll be speaking about this all the time. So here we go. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, it's also in our best interest to continue to pay you and girl rather than get involved with the health insurance.
Absolutely. Look, we did, I did investigate that briefly a few years ago. You're going to pay for that, that comfort, quite frankly. You're going to pay for that knowing that, hey, I'm only going to have to pay X at the beginning of the year. If, again, if the committee wants, I can certainly spend some time investigating it, but I'm going to tell you at the end of the day, it's going to be higher.
Medical costs continue to rise. A few years ago, it was like 12 million if we, we had got the insurance, and that would have been some cost.
Yeah.
We paid regardless if we incurred that, that kind of cost. We paid those premiums, so this is still the way to go.
You're always going to pay a premium. You're always going to pay a premium just for that fixed rate because at that point, it's the, it's the insurer that's taking the risk, not, not us anymore, so you're going to pay a premium for that.
Any other comments? Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nato? Are these postings or are they just descriptions of current jobs attached to this benefit specialist?
Oh, that's, that's the next, that's the next one down. That's the, yes.
That's the next agenda.
Okay. I'll save it for that.
Okay.
Wonderful. Any other thoughts? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the fiscal update for the September 30th, 2019 numbers. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'd like to ask Mr. Matorianni to give us an update on facilities. I want to thank you, first of all, for getting the HVAC working properly so we're not freezing here tonight. We all appreciate your efforts in that matter, so I'll let you take this away.
Thank you. Bless you, Mr. Perrier.
If we hadn't fixed it, we could have had rental income from Stock and Chalk.
So I'm sure as the committee is aware, we had a small electrical fire at the high school on October 16th as a result of that, and we're already pursuing, looking at the heating system there. We've contacted next-chair McCandle, and they're examining all of the heating units within the ceilings and the walls to review, make sure that there's no faulty wiring and any of the components are bad. The units that are at the high school are approximately 40 years old, so at this time, we are able to build the existing units that are not in the ceiling and in the walls. We have other classroom units that are capable of heating the entire building based on the structure that's in place there. However, we are looking at the system and what we're going to do to update the components. So unfortunately, it's very strange. We'll probably be spending some money there. In addition to that, we also have a follow-up on some projects list here in the district, so we did, we did several projects here. There are several that are still rounding up at Savoy, the Bubble Menders. Those are completed. We're exploring some options in terms of increasing the airflow in the classrooms, possibly with some screen options. The Boilermint project, while the Vastity Award is done, the heat was on for October 1st. They are doing some wrap-up work in the Boilermint itself, and they expect to have that completed in the next couple of weeks. Drainage issue at Collier and Harris, those projects, they're still in process. The actual physical work will not take place until one of the school breaks or maybe up to next summer. That's something that we anticipated, going to go through RIDE to get some reimbursement back, something that's very clever around now or at another time. And the last summer project that will again be postponed to next summer is the elementary playground projects at Citizens, Citizens and Collier and Savoy is an error, I apologize, I should also say Leo's Play Elementary School. So Citizens Blacktop Play Area along with over at Leo's Savoy will be receiving some upgraded playground equipment funded through local dollars and RIDE funds. So those projects are, again, summer projects that weren't able to be completed before school started, and as a result, we anticipate pulling this forward in the next summer. And then third, these are more pages about transportation. So if you may not be aware, some of the transportation issues we've experienced over the last year and a half, I've been reporting to me with several of the principals that particularly those principals, they're experiencing lag times of 30 to 40 minutes in terms of the busing, arriving, whether it's drop-off or pickup. They're now reporting that there's been a significant improvement. Durham's increased their effort to make sure that their buses arrive in on time. They're now experiencing maybe five to 10 minutes of late time, which is a significant increase, and the principals, those that reported back may need to be within an acceptable period of time. So Durham is still trying to be as vigilant in terms of improving that further, but they came happy to report that they made some significant progress, and we anticipate continuing to work with them to improve the arrival and drop-off that. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Matorianni. Any questions or comments for our director? If not, I'll make a motion, receive and place on file a facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We do have a piece of unfinished business. We need to, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the September 25th, 2019 open session minutes. These were never finalized because we had some issues. Now they are. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any changes, amendments to the amendments? If not, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burgh.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepel?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kabizdis?
Yes.
Now we'll go on to new business, and first, to what we're going to talk, we're going to be talking about, we need to approve the, the transfers from the General Fund, one to the Capital Fund, and the General Fund to the Medical Savings Fund. Let's do the first one. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Fund. And is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier?
So this building capital fund transfer, this is to replenish the money that we spent last fiscal year as well as over the summer on capital projects throughout the district. Mr. Toriani just touched on a few, and we're wrapping up now. This money is actually going to be combined with the money we're going to receive for reimbursements from these projects. That's going to really be the seed money for our five-year, upcoming five-year capital plan. We're in the process now of putting that together, and one of the requirements of the five-year capital plan is that we need to show how we're going to pay for it. It's great to put together a plan, but at the end of the day, if we can't prove to RIDE how we're going to fund this, then they're not going to approve the plan. So this is actually a big piece to how we're going to get our five-year capital plan moving forward in the next February, stage one, and then the following fall is when the five-year capital plan will be finalized. So this is the first step we can really get them rolling, and I think it'll be great to help us start, start plugging away at this. So that's the reason we have this transfer fund, we see.
And this is a departure, this cash flow requirement, the subprime cash flow, that's a departure from prior history?
No, it's always been that way. What, five years ago when we did this, we actually put together a plan, and it got, the last two years got cut off because we couldn't sure, we could only fund the first three years of the project, so RIDE actually ended up saying, all right, well, we're going to approve, re-stretch your three-year plan to a five-year plan, but you're only going to get approval for those first three years because that was all we could show, we could fund.
So a lot of the cash flow, the available cash flow of our capital plan?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's not going anywhere, so this is very important that we get this set up and set aside, and we can show RIDE that, hey, look, we have a capital, capital improvement fund. This is where the funds are going to be coming from.
Any comments, discussion on this item? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burgh.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepel?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kabizdis?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the transfer from the General Fund to the Medical Savings Fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier?
This was due to that credit that we received from Blue Cross, from the IBNR. We decided, decided... to reserve that with a medical reserve, and then we can use that going forward for any future medical expenses that we may have. That's, that's all that, this one.
How much is that transfer, this one?
A hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's, that's the side of the IBNR credit that we received. And I think it was the end of September when that came through. It took, it took some time. So, we got it at the end of September, and I like to use it that way.
Sure. Any comments, discussion? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burgh.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepescus?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the restructuring of the local 1137. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier, Dr. McGee, anyone?
I'll, I'll take it.
Mr. Perrier?
So, so in front of you here is 1137 restructuring. There's a few different components to this right now. The first component has to do with clerks and the secretaries. This proposal is going to take all our current 10-month clerks and turn them into 10-month secretaries. The reason for that is there's really not a difference between clerks and secretaries anymore. I think this is a bit of an archaic term that's kind of hung around the contract. I think the real difference used to be typing versus not typing, and everybody types these days. So, after looking at the job descriptions for both clerks and secretaries and figuring out what they actually do, there's really no difference anymore. So, it's not, to me, it doesn't seem justified to have two different pay rates for people doing the same job. This is actually going to take all the 12 positions we have for 10-month clerks and then move all those people to 10-month secretaries. That's, that's piece one of this. The second piece here is we've actually moved around a position that we currently, we used to have, the assistant superintendent secretary. We're taking that position and turning that into a director of curriculum secretary for, for a friend here in Miss Hold. Also, there's been some changes in my department. The biggest change is I've actually eliminated a position in accounts payable clerk. With the secretary coming in for Miss Hold and the clerk position being eliminated, there's actually been no change in FTEs for 1137. The FTE that we ended up eliminating was a non-union position. So, due to that elimination, there have been some changes in the workflows and work duties for people in my department, and I've adjusted their salary according to their new job descriptions, which I attached behind this. Overall, that affects five people in my department. You can see the changes from what they were doing, the hours they were working, to what they will be receiving now. After you net all this up together, all the pluses and the minuses, we actually are picking up twelve thousand one hundred and thirty dollars in expense. But since we're eliminating an FTE, we're actually picking up a benefits package as well. Once you back out, that cost of the benefits package was a little over nineteen thousand dollars. After all these changes, we'll be saving a little over seven thousand dollars on a whole. So, I've worked very closely with the 1137 union leadership here. They've been great. And, you know, we're just looking to write, write some things here and correct some things, put together something that everybody can get moving forward. So, that's the proposal we have.
Mrs. Nato, I know you had some thoughts about this.
Yeah. First of all, they're not colored posts. They're just draft descriptions, right?
Well, yeah. Well, what's happening now is, you know, all the people are doing what they're doing. We haven't made any changes. As far as the postings, there's nothing posted right now because we are awaiting school committee approval before we move forward with any of this. But I can really speak for my staff. Kathy Kopeck, who was our former accounts payable clerk, retired in July. So, we've really been running this way since July. We've been down that person since July. And quite frankly, that's the busiest time of year for finance. I mean, it's always busy finance, but when you're closing one year out and opening another year at the same time, that's when things are at their highest in terms of stress. And I think my staff did a great job closing out last fiscal year and getting into this year, being down person. So, while we haven't made any of these changes, we've kind of been living there since July anyway because some positions are controlled.
Okay. Are they on a step program?
Yeah, there's, there's steps, correct.
Three steps?
Five steps.
Okay. So, these salaries of these people, are they at the fifth step?
They're, they're basically on whatever step they're currently working at. It's, it's a mix.
So, it's not indicated here what step they're on, right?
Yeah, it's not. I didn't indicate on here what step they're currently on.
Okay. Now, does all your current staff meet this criteria that's listed in the postings?
Absolutely.
Okay. Interesting. Okay. Now, do you have a payroll specialist in addition to the payroll supervisor?
Two payroll people, correct.
Okay. What is the specialist?
The payroll supervisor is the one running the payroll, doing the heavy lifting there. The payroll specialist supports the payroll supervisor, gathering time sheets, helping with the clerical side of the payroll, entering hours into the system, and dealing with paycheck issues, customer support, so on and so forth there.
Okay. And when you move the clerks to secretaries, secretaries make more money than clerks?
Correct.
All right. So, do they all be making more money?
Correct.
Okay. And they're all going to work on a 10-month basis now?
Yes. There's no plans on changing their work schedule at all. Just moving them clerks to secretaries.
Do you have some secretaries that work on a 12-month basis?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We have 10-month secretaries.
I know that. So, I'm just saying, they're going to have a 10-month schedule, so they're paying their salary over the 10 months?
Uh, yes, correct.
So, there's no scapping in extra months?
Uh, not for these positions, no. These are middle school, high school positions, some in, and they're now around in the summer.
Okay. Where did this money come from to build the entries?
There's no, we're actually saving money by doing all this.
Because you eliminated a position?
Correct.
Okay. So, you took that salary and you spread it out in different ways, per se?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I get that. It was a bit confusing there at first. Okay.
The elimination of that one position is really funny. And not only that, but the savings of moving from an assistant superintendent secretary to a secretary for director curriculum, there was a small savings on that as well.
Okay. But for example, these positions pay more than the secretaries, clerks that you have now, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, people that are secretaries or clerks right now could never move into these positions unless they have the requirements or pass a test, right?
Well, we talked about the job descriptions.
Yeah.
We were looking at the job descriptions. There's really no difference between a clerk and a secretary.
No, I know that. But I'm talking about the difference in a secretary and a benefit specialist, for example.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes. Actually, those positions were not changing because we have specialists. We have a grade specialist and a benefits specialist already. The accounts payable clerk to the accounts payable specialist. There's actually a test that our current accounts payable clerk took in the past. She was the only one who could take it past that test. We offered it several times. Other people did not pass it. And as for the payroll specialist, he is actually supervising someone. So, I feel that that's not, he's not really a specialist. He's in a supervisory capacity. He's managing, you know, she's one person, but he is managing that one person. And I felt that that's, that's a supervising position.
Okay. And when is the vacancy? How are they posted?
When the vacancy goes out, I believe it's posted internally first. And after that, we decide if it's filled internally, then the position that they're leading is vacated. And if nobody bids on it internally, at that point, it's put out for external posting.
Okay. All right. Just curious. Thank you. Anyone else have any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chair Burgh?
Thank you. I'm looking at the, was the payroll secretary, right?
Correct.
Who now becomes a payroll specialist?
Yes, that's correct.
But did you say that clerks will become secretaries?
Clerks are becoming secretaries, and the payroll secretary is actually becoming a specialist.
Is the payroll secretary, right?
There's, no, it's just, we're just changing the position. We're updating the position. And then due to the new duties and jobs, duties assigned to that position, we're changing the pay line.
That position has the greatest degrees.
That's correct.
And that's the primary secretary is assistant to department, is now secretary to director. Is her salary in line with other secretaries to directors if they exist?
Absolutely. Every, every director has a secretary that's paid on the secretary forty-hour line. So, she's paid the same as everybody, everybody else's secretary for, throughout the district.
Okay. Anyone else? Mrs. Capwell?
Thank you, Chairman. What just might be helpful for some of us in the future, because I, I think it does matter that we're seeing some of the hours that they're working increasing. So, that definitely, it's, it's not that it's just a straight increase across the board that so-and-so is now making fifty-nine, a hundred dollars more. Part of that is they're working more hours.
Correct.
So, yeah, and I think that that would help show that it's not just across the board that they're being made X dollar amount more for what they're doing today that actually works more hours.
We could, I could certainly break that down. So, you'd get a better idea comparing these things going forward.
Yeah. And I'd also like to know, people in place, what steps they're on?
Absolutely. I, I can prep both of those and share what they're reading. It's not a problem at all.
Whenever you have a chance. Also, what does the top step secretary make?
Boy, I don't have it off the top of my head. I can certainly share that with you as well.
But they make a lot less than these people. I would imagine.
Ah, yes.
Because I never believed that you paid our clerks and secretaries what they were worth. Saying, not just you, but we never even thought what they were worth. Thank God they don't go up to the public sector yet.
Mr. Turgeon, do you know?
Yeah. Top step of the secretary is step five, seven or eight, seven hundred and eight dollars.
It's, it's, there's a conversion.
Yeah. But Mike, what's the salary of the top step secretary?
Thirty-six, eighty-one, six.
And how many steps did I have?
Five steps.
Five steps. Okay. All right. Just wondering. That's why if you become administrative assistant, you make more money than a secretary, right?
Well, the administrative assistants are not in the union.
Yeah, I realize that.
Those are, those are out of the union. So, we have flexibility to pay what would be necessary because it's a non-union contract.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burgh?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepescus?
Yes.
And I can certainly share out the information that I said I would, to give, break down the steps and then show what's the difference between the, the actual increase and then the hours.
Very well. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the stipends for the middle school coaches. Is there a second?
Second.
As you know, right now, most of our, if not all, our coaches for the middle school sports programs were volunteered. And that, we've, you know, it has been felt that that has to change. Because we certainly can't have a situation where we don't have coaches. And so, we need to look at, at this situation. So, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you each have a spreadsheet that is titled Middle School Sports Expansion Fiscal Impact. So, as, as you said, Mr. Chairman, are currently, all of our middle school athletic teams have volunteers. So, back when the budget commission was here, and there were many cuts that were made throughout the district, one of the cuts was middle school sports programs specific to the coaches. And so, the programs, some of the programs still remained. However, it was on volunteer basis. So, we actually lost some sports early on. And, but fortunately, we, Mr. Perrier and I, sat down and, you know, this, this conversation was started a few years ago, I believe Chairman Seal at the time about bringing back the stipend positions to the middle school. So, what you have in front of you is a list of the sports broken down by their season. So, you have the fall sports, the winter, the spring sports. And then the next column is the head coach. The, the stipend is in the contract currently. It never left the contract, even though the coaches were not paid at the middle school. It's, it was a five-point-two percent, five-point-two-five, five-point-two-five percent of top step. So, that's, that's the stipend that we are proposing, which really we're not proposing because it's already in the contract. But if you go to the next column, officials, from, from the, the column that reads officials all the way over to the far right where listed the supplies and uniforms, that currently is already budgeted for. That's money that we're already expending for our middle school programs. So, if you go back to the second column where it says head coach, if you go down to the bottom of that column, we're looking at an increase forty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and nineteen cents for the stipend positions. That would be the actual cost to the district to bring these particular coaching positions. And it would be one coach per team at, at the five-point-two-five percent. That, that last column where it says supplies and uniforms, the eighty-eight thousand, that's, that would be the combined cost. So, we're actually only incurring the additional forty-seven thousand. The eighty-eight thousand is the forty-seven, three sixty-nine ninety plus, the, what we're already expending for those, for those teams.
So, we right now are paying for forty thousand of the eighty-eight.
Correct.
Forty-one thousand. Now, the bussing, is that with or without students on the bus?
Uh, Mr. Natariani has, has indicated that that would include students.
We strive to put students on our buses, Alan, and drive around. Very helpful. Any questions, comments on this? Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so providing the stipends for the coaches, do we have all these teams?
We do.
I mean, I'm, I'm excited to see the unified.
Yes.
Program in the middle school. I spoke to the coach of the high school unified program, and he was excited about trying to come to the middle school. So, this is now viable.
So, it is. So, actually, that, that's, that's the next, but they're, but they're related. But to answer your question, so every, every one of these positions minus the unified volleyball, unified basketball, we currently have at the middle schools. It's great.
Mrs. Capwell, I know you had a comment, but Chairman?
Do the boys and girls cross-country teams travel together? There's no cost for buses under the girls' cross-country?
Um, Ms. Giordano is here, our athletic director. Can you, could you answer that question, please?
Yes, we, we don't need to provide it as a piece. So, these are cross-countries together, the boys and girls. We didn't see any of the buses.
So, that's why there's no bus?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burgh?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepescus?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the middle school united sports teams, unified sports teams. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last, I believe it was the last CILAC meeting, we received some very good feedback from parents who were attendance. And, and one good feedback was that although a unified sports team exists at the school, volleyball and basketball, there was not a unified team that existed at the middle schools.
there was not a unified team that existed at the, um, middle schools. So, I sat down with Mr. Perrier and with Ms. Giordano, our athletic director, and, um, we talked about what it would take to, to bring the, uh, those teams to the middle school. There certainly are, um, enough students at the middle school that would be interested and it would greatly benefit from the program going down to the, the middle schools. The high school unified sports program is, is, is very successful, um, so we are presenting that to you, I'm presenting this to you this evening to add at the middle school, a unified volleyball and a unified basketball team.
Any comments on this?
Mr. Chairman, um, I can remember my discussion with the, with the, I guess, the basketball coach, the unified at the high school. He said, well, it's difficult, he's getting a coach from the middle school. Are the cultures in place?
No. We don't have, so we, we don't have any...
No coach right now?
No, but we have had teachers, so we're just, and that's the value of that, so we try to get going.
Okay. So, there is an interest, great. I'm sorry.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepescus?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a, a motion to discuss and approve the revisions to health and wellness policy. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Chair Burke?
Okay, that's me again, thank you. Um, I think you also have an agenda, copies of the education department health and wellness policy. You know, this was first written, I believe, three years ago and we had to come together, uh, to put it together and it hasn't been done in years.
Correct.
So, we put in place finally a health and wellness policy. Uh, Dr. McGee was involved, I was involved, Ellen Shalby was involved, Conrad, my mother was involved, okay, and some other people. So, we have a place on policy. Uh, the policy needed to be updated, um, and I think you can see that there are some places where it was updated, particularly once again, uh, Ms., Ms. Collins went around over the reliable, healthy school coalition, she helped us to update this particular policy, particularly, um, updating the state laws and the federal laws that are linked in the policy. So, I think you'll see that, that, that some of that is there. The other thing we also did with the health and wellness policy this time, we've been talking about it for years, but we finally made sure to add a mental health component because by state law, health and wellness policies deal with nutrition and physical activity. We wanted to add mental health also to our wellness policy. So, and, and that was particularly done by Kevin LeBroy, Bono, excuse me, Kevin Bono, a private aware, who put a basic effort into the health and wellness policy, uh, detects more with mental health. So, so special thanks to him for adding that to our, our health and wellness policy.